Okay.
Yeah, they're themselves.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm sorry we were muted there for a second. We are now ready to start the planning board meeting. If everybody online wouldn't mind introducing themselves. We see it Cory, Ari, well Jessica from our planning department.
Thank you. This is Cory Auerbach in the law firm of Barkley Damon. On behalf of Source Renewables, my colleague Ari Goldberg is on as well.
Thank you.
And then yes, it's just Jessica Lee from the planning department.
Thanks, everybody. We are going to share our space now for the agenda packet so we can all be at the same place and be looking at the same agenda. We will start at the top of the agenda.
Was that Fran or?
I got why Fran Tesulo, current town attorney for the town of Portlandville.
I assume you heard of that project.
I am for the Source Renewables.
Okay.
Now, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Fran.
Oh, trust me, I like the saying in the back.
Yeah, so everyone had a chance to read the minutes. Could I have a motion?
Second amendment.
Second?
Oh, second.
All in favor of second amendment?
I agree.
Any opposed?
Okay.
Chairman's remarks, those reported positions, except you put that in there.
Yeah, I think last month we had assigned the nominating committee.
We did.
That was scheduled to bring forward their nominations.
I wasn't here, so I left early, so I guess I was having.
Yeah, we didn't.
The nominee, who have a drink, to me.
That's okay. We briefly talked. I didn't get any nominations, did you? Okay, we could, we could vote on the positions in January.
We could do that. We did it last year. I mean, usually we vote on them this year. You know, we just say what the group is and then we vote on them in the January meeting anyhow, I think.
So you still have not received any nominations?
Do we have any? Should we clarify the process for getting nominations? I think, if I recall, the last time I, I got, we asked Chuck to be chair and Paul was going to be vice chair and then he would move on to the business. But I think that's what we talked about.
Well, if we wait for the committee to recommend a slate, that's what we typically do. And you recommend to the board and then we can either go out or.
Are you okay to remain in here?
I'm not anything.
Oh, I thought I reappointed.
I'm not.
Well, did we?
We reappointed him. Yeah, yeah, let's. I'm not anything.
So, with the director's remarks.
Yeah, sure. I just wanted to do a quick introduction to all the planning board members. Hank Day is our new land use planner on staff. So we're excited to have Hank. This is his third week.
Third week.
So.
I agree.
So we're seeing some emails, calling and hearing more from Hank. So we're excited to have him. All right. And.
Want to go right into the one we have over?
Before we proceed with clarification, Fran, you're here representing Corbin.
So. I'm here only on behalf of planning board, planning. Their request to provide any.
The town.
Yes, presenting the town. Chris asked me to be here.
I had suggested to Fran, I know in, for some municipalities, like in the city of Portland, where we have larger projects, especially that have a little bit more complex history to them. I know it's very helpful to have Roy attend and be able to answer questions directly to him. So when I saw Fran, I.
Well, I just want to clarify, he's not representing the principles of the ministry.
Cory and Ari are representing Source.
Okay.
Great. So we'll get right into it. So this was a project received from Portlandville for CT Solar 8, or formerly also known as the Source Renewables. This application was for conditional permit and aquifer protection district special permit. This was referred to the county within 500 feet from Locust Ave. This applicant is seeking to construct a 3.25 megawatt immunity distributed solar project on 21.6 acres of the 24 and a half acre parcel. The existing zoning is residential one. And that, but that has been taken care of already with the town for use variance. As we know, solar, solar sightings only allowed in agricultural and industrial zoning districts within Portlandville. But that has been settled previously with the first round of this application. So. This, so this project itself is about 1,500 north of the intersection of Locust Ave and Route 13. It's directly adjacent, you can see from the map, to the previously constructed solar array within the city of Portland. And so this is right on the other side of the. Heard by the town of Portlandville in the spring of 2020. It was denied as the solar installations aren't permitted in the ROI districts. And the applicant filed the Article 78 petition that went to the New York State appellate court where Portlandville DVA's decision was reversed and the applicant's petition was branded. On April 28th of 2020, the county planning department did receive the application for use variance, conditional permit and aquifer protection district special permit. The STACK report was completed, as submitted to the town of Portlandville. But this was without review and resolution by the Portland County Planning Board. On May 20th of 2020, the board meeting was canceled due to the COVID-19 epidemic. That, all of that information was included in the application that I attached with the agenda. So since use variance was overturned, the review is only for a conditional permit and aquifer protection district special permit. In conformance with Portlandville's local law 4 of 2022, which is the amended solar energy systems regulations that are included in the town of Portlandville 178, 123.3 Solar Energy Systems section of their code. The conditional permit is required in the town where the facilities are permitted. Therefore, the applicant has been required to obtain one for this location. And it needs the aquifer protection district special permit as it is the projected amount that costs it exceeds 150,000 dollars. So. This system is considered a Tier 3B ground mounted large scale solar energy system as per the code. And the plan indicates that the proposed array would include ground mounted tilting solar design panels. The proposed system consists of 225 strings of 29 modules in each string for a total of a little over 6,500 modules and 13 inverters, which are connected to two separate transformers. The application that's provided does not include a visual impact statement. Does not include a visual impact assessment as required by Code Section 178, 123.3. And this section does state that the town planning board, at its discretion, may weigh through requirements for the preparation of a visual impact assessment. But in this case, the project's proposed on a slope that's clearly visible from both the interstate highway and other surrounding areas. The airport's recommended that the town require the applicant to provide. Referenced prior to a final action by the town planning board. And the visual impact assessment produced shall also include U shed maps within a two mile radius facility as a project, as a project is visible from Interstate 81 as noted in the associated code section. The array would be enclosed by an eight foot long, or an eight foot high ave fence with security access gates. Signage at the site would include the facility's 911 address and the name and phone number of the site owner and operations as the man. It's recommended that the town require the applicant to include 24 hour emergency contact information to be clearly displayed and ensure that the knock box that's provided is also accessible with, to the Portlandville Fire Department. The proposed panels have a maximum height of 13 feet above ground and are seven and a half foot wide. And the proposed setbacks are a minimum of 100 feet from all adjoining properties that are not part of a continuous process or project. Start on page 38. So the site, the site would be accessed via two 12 foot wide maintenance roads. One maintenance road would be off of Locust Ave. Go right down to the site. And while the other is at the rear of the parcel and ties into the adjacent projects that's within the city of Portland as shown on the site plan on C201. It's recommended that the applicant apply for and obtain Section 136 permit from the county highway department for the proposed access driveway off of Locust Ave, which is county Route 113. And the majority of the maintenance roads would be located outside of the fence area which enters the fence area via a secured manual access gate. There you go. You can kind of see the one access off of Locust and the other is through the adjacent parcel. The applicant has not indicated lighting information on the, on the submitted site plan. It's also therefore recommended that the applicant provide a lighting plan in conformance with the associated code section. The proposed area of solar array sitting is predominantly open field that was farmed in the past and wooded area. The applicant is proposing to clear, clear cut 7.65 acres of trees and shrubs for the installation of the array. Now, the Portlandville Code 178, 123.3, Tier 3D states that any application that includes or requires tree cutting or substantial forest conversion must include a description or assessment of the benefits of the trees or forests to be cut and the environmental impacts of that tree cutting, forest conversion. Such as, such assessment shall include an analysis of alternatives and mitigation measures to minimize the impact. As the proposed clearing is about 43% of the total acreage disturbed by the project, it's recommended that the town acquire the applicant to either redesign the area of panel siding to not include the forested area or provide a complete assessment for the town to review prior to final action of the town planning board. This assessment shall include an analysis of the benefits of the trees to be cut and the environmental impacts of the forest conversion, including an analysis of alternatives and mitigation measures as per the associated code. The Portland County is part of the coordinated review committee process. The Portland County Solar and Water Conservation District provided feedback. And we've listed some of the comments. Then approximately 35% of the, the area proposed for development, or the western third is classified by USDA as prime farmland. And approximately 35% is of statewide importance and the remainder is not prime farmland. And the property has not recently been used for agriculture. The associated code section states that ground mounted large scale solar energy systems shall not be located in the following areas unless otherwise approved by the town planning board in conjunction with the conditional permit approval process. One is prime farmland. It's recommended that the town consider any negative impact of the solar sighting on prime farmland prior to final action by the town planning board. Also, what was mentioned was that slopes on the property range anywhere from 3 to 40% and approximately 50% of the developed area has slopes averaging 20 to 25%, including the forested areas to be cleared. The Portlandville Code reads that ground mounted large scale solar energy system shall not be located in the following areas unless otherwise approved by the town planning board in conjunction with the conditional permit process. And 3 in that list is on slopes greater than 15%. It's recommended that the town require the applicant to alter the design so that the panels are not located in the areas with the grave slopes or demonstrate through engineering studies and to the satisfaction of the town that the proposed development will cause no adverse environmental impacts that will be, that will not be satisfactorily mitigated prior to final action by the town planning board. It was also noted that it's unclear whether the plans date. And a new EAAS may be required. It's therefore recommended that the town receive written assurance from the applicant that the project has not been altered since the 2020 seeker was completed and require the applicant provided updated EAAS. The applicant would also be required to file a notice of intent with DEC, prepare and submit a SWIP to DEC for the site and obtain a DEC construction storm water permit for coverage that, because it's greater than an acre of soil disturbance. The SWIP must meet the current Storm Water Management Design Manual and the runoff production and green infrastructure requirements. The applicant would also be required to obtain approval of the final design of the Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan from the county solar water conservation district prior to any positive considerations of the proposal. It is also recommended that the town ensure that the applicant contacted DEC Division of Environmental Permits to request a jurisdiction determination and to apply for and obtain any permits required as a result of this determination. It is noted that there is a note on one of the site plans that were provided that they did, that they were doing this. However, I left this in a report as a reminder for the town board as well. The application, the code, the county, the Portlandville Code states that in addition to the town of Portlandville's other public noticing requirements, adjoining property owners to all Tier 3B projects shall be provided notice of the town of Portlandville's receipt of such an application. So it's therefore recommended that the adjoining property owners receive notice of said project as per this code section. And the applicant has not submitted a plan for decommissioning including financial security and abandonment. It's therefore recommended that the town receive and review decommissioning and financial security information prior to a final action by the town planning board to ensure that all costs associated with removal and proper disposal of associated materials be included in the decommissioning bond to ensure that no cost at the end of the project's life span cycle become the responsibility of the landowner or the town. And finally, the applicant has indicated the original seeker with the Portland County IDA as lead agency is intended to be continued for said project. So we included a recommendation that seeker requirements from that. So our final recommendations as a result of the STACK report for approval are a recommendation of approval of the application for aquifer protection district special permit and conditional permit only if the following contingencies are satisfied. That the town requires the applicant to provide a complete visual impact assessment prior. Applicant to include 24 hour emergency contact information to be clearly displayed and the locking latch that Portlandville Fire Department can put on a knock box. That the applicant apply for and obtain a Section 136 permit from the Portland County Highway Department for the proposed access driveway off of Locust Ave. That the applicant provide a lighting plan in conformance with the associated town codes. That the town require the applicant to either redesign the area of panel siding to include, to not include the forested area or provide a complete assessment for the town review prior to final action of the town planning board. And that assessment shall include an analysis of the benefits of the trees to be cut and the environmental impacts if the forest conversion including an analysis of alternative and mitigation measures as per the code. That the town consider any negative impact of the solar sighting on prime farmland prior to final action by the town, by the town planning board. That the town require the applicant to alter the design so that the panels are not located in the areas with the greatest slopes or demonstrate through engineering studies and to the satisfaction of the town that the proposed development will cause no adverse environmental impacts that will not be satisfactorily mitigated prior to final action by the town planning board. That the town receive written assurance from the applicant that the project had not been altered since the 2020 seeker was completed nor required the applicant to provide an updated EAAS if so. That the applicant obtain approval of the final design of the Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan from the county solar and water conservation district prior to any positive consideration of the proposal. That the town determine whether the 1.478. Seven, I think we've got a discrepancy there. That's supposed to be 7.65. 7.65 acres of tree clearing is, is considered substantial forest conversion. And if the applicant should be required to provide an assessment and mitigation plan as per the town code section. The applicant obtained town planning board approval of the use of USDA designated prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance for a ground mounted large scale solar energy system. That the applicant preparing and obtaining approval of the Storm Water Prevention Plan including water quality and quantity management for the site both during and after construction from the town. A town review by the county solar water conservation district since the project would disturb more than one acre of land. That the applicant contacts the DEC Division of Environmental Permits to request a jurisdiction determination and to apply for and obtain any permits required as a result of the determination. That the adjoining. Reviews of state code section. That the town receive and review decommissioning and financial security information prior to final action by the town planning board to ensure that all the costs associated with removal and proper disposal of the associated materials be included in the decommissioning bond to ensure that no cost at the end of the project life cycle become the responsibility of the landowner or the town. And the town consider evaluating the estimated amount for decommissioning and ensure that all costs associated, that is duplicate. That's a duplicate note there. And finally, 17, compliance with the.
Could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept Stan's recommendation.
Do you have a second? Take discussion. Would like.
I have a question. The USDA prime farmland, are there regulations from USDA that apply to this other than the local planning board? There aren't any, I talked to Mayan about that. And it's really just how the local zoning code incorporates the designation into their local law. There's no tax break for that? Don't they get a?
No, it's an A, if it could be prime apartment, so.
Right. Oh, okay. So it has to be. Yeah.
I have a question. Didn't in the past we also state that when they are decommissioning and removing that they put the land or parcel back to, if not better than before? Shouldn't they have to replant the trees that they're cutting down?
Yeah.
Shouldn't we put that in the recommendation?
I mean, we could certainly note that separately, but I think that, that there was no decommissioning information provided.
Oh.
And so normally, and that's listed in the code, that that's required that they do that? And in fact, that they like replant the site with native, that, right, material? And that's listed in the code that they have to do that? But since they didn't provide any decommissioned information, I think that would kind of lump them into that.
Yeah, I'm good by the shit required that they do want. I think that was probably the local board would have to look at that as part of.
Okay. I think most decommissioning plans say back to the original, they close this property. I just want to.
But they have their own requirement, I think, on the decommissioning. I believe the town has that in their orders.
Okay.
My understanding. At least we.
Yeah.
We look at that when the order is given, right?
All the, the other things that were included in the agenda. I didn't know if I saw different names and addresses for this project since it's been so many years before. Just make sure that that's all good, but I think you have that in the notes there. My comment is, it's just that, you know, I, I don't like this site. It's an eyesore, but that's nothing that we can rule on. It's a sad state, though, that the city and the town weren't, you know, together on this to coordinate reviews and things, meaning that it's on the line there, you know? And I think we should try and promote that more from here on out.
And I, I do think that it, you know, also would have been better to streamline, especially with construction. I'm sure the developer would have preferred to have done it all in one bow sweep and less disruption to the community. And I wonder if there were phases, that they know this was going to be expanded to that area?
I think that, you know, if you wanted to speak directly to the attorney, but my, my understanding, the original were included both parcel.
Yeah, happy to address that. Hopefully you can hear me okay. Your connection's a little bit spotty from time to time. So if there's an issue with mine, just let me know. So, you know, as was stated, the, the developer submitted this contemporaneously with both the city of Portland and the town of Portlandville. Unfortunately, the town in an arbitrary manner illegally denied the project, forcing us to go through years of litigation, first at the Supreme Court and then to the appellate division, just to have the appellate division determine that we were within our rights to proceed with the project. So we would have loved to have developed this at the same time. And unfortunately, we were prohibited from doing that by the town's arbitrary conduct.
A couple things, a couple things. I agree with Cory to an extent. Yes, it went to litigation. It went to Article 78. It was appealed, but the final decision, a unanimous decision from the appellate division was rendered February 23rd of 2003. I came aboard on short notice in September of 24 and was not aware of this. Quite frankly, I'll leave some things out, but the, the variance, the use variance was granted in October of this year. That's clear. Those are the facts.
Yeah, Fran is absolutely right.
The town had some, the new experience was granted in October of this year. Only when I became the town attorney and realized that this, and I'll give Ari and, and, and and Cory their, their credit. They were bringing it to the town's table, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Cory, by about late summer of this year. But it'd been sooner, but when I came aboard, Cory was kind enough to send me the decision of the appellate division. And then we moved quickly to get the use variance. Quite frankly, it had to be granted because that would be a unanimous decision of the appellate division set.
Fran.
And we granted it. Think that's a fair statement, Cory?
Everything that Fran said is 100% accurate. This is not any criticism of Fran whatsoever. We could not be more pleased with the working relationship that we've had with Attorney Casulo since he has started. Frankly, we wouldn't be here where we are without his intervention and participation because frankly, despite our efforts, which were robust with the prior administration, we were not able to move forward since the decision was made in twenty twenty three. So that was not a criticism of Mr. Casulo in any way. In fact.
And I didn't take it that way.
Yeah.
Whatever, right now, let's get our bodies at hand. We don't need to discuss the legal advice with those people right now. So maybe I'll have a comment here.
Yeah, true. Two things, I guess. First of all, staff's recommendations that go back to the town. Once they leave here, it's up to the town for enforcement, correct?
Correct, but I handed out the general municipal law as well as a reminder that as a planning board, we have three different actions. Approval, modifications, which are provided in these recommendations, and disapproval. These modifications, if the town wants to move forward without and after these modifications, they also need a super majority.
Now, I guess a question to Cory or Ari, are you aware of our staff recommendations?
They're not totally dissimilar from the recommendations back when this was before the board back in twenty twenty. No, we were not aware of them until they were just read to us, but we are aware of them now.
But there's no surprises?
Uh, you know, I wouldn't say there's no surprises. Frankly, the fact of the matter is that a negative declaration was issued for this. So the environmental review is completed. So issues related to potentially significant environmental impacts were already resolved by the lead agency when the negative declaration was issued. So I understand the comments and, you know, particularly as we go back.
We have a laundry list of recommendations to the town. And I guess my question is, you know, are they going to be thrown out the door willy nilly as the project proceeds? Or are you going to, is the developer going to take these recommendations to heart and implement them as part of the plan?
Yeah, we'll absolutely take your recommendations into advisement. I think that there are some recommendations, frankly, that are a significant overreach as to the planning board's role in a two thirty nine M referral, particularly as they relate to mandating certain modifications by the town for which the town has a waiver authority. So the town has an opportunity to waive certain requirements, and it sounded to me, again, I've only listened to them, I have not read through them, but it's.
The agenda is posted on our website for public information as of last week as well. And generally, the local code enforcement officers or submitting officer will bring that to the developer's attention, but these are posted for public information.
Yeah, so news to us, right? So we've not heard these before, they haven't been provided to us by the town. That's perfectly okay. My point was simply that it sounded like there were certain proposed conditions that actually remove some of the authority that the planning board would otherwise have. So again, they're just recommendations and we understand that, and we look forward to continuing the municipal review and approval process with the town.
I think our recommendations were actually in direct quotes from the local zoning law, and we were representing the relief from that in an or statement. So, you know, their local zoning code says that certain things must be avoided, such as tree clearing. So we simply said in a fashion that we stayed consistent that you either, the design either be altered to not clear trees or that it be proven to the town that there won't be any negative impact to this as per stated in the code. I mean, this is not.
Yeah, I may have missed it. I may have missed if you said or otherwise waived, like it says in the zoning code. I was, again, hearing it for the first time as you spoke, so it's possible I missed that.
Again, this is going to go on for a long time. We don't move in on this. My only, he does have a comment other than Paul. I mean, there are certain issues I think we do address in here, but things that were not permitted by Portlandville Code, and that's where her comments were. So she's saying that if they're going to prove it, they got to go through those things. They're not permitted by Portlandville Code and get relief from them or prove to the town, they're not going to be a problem. I think that's the way most of her comments read of this. I mean, I personally have issues with building on something as steep as the. There is a facility up there now. I don't know if that has any adverse effects at this time or has had any storm work. Well, I tell I don't really know. I've been.
Included that this one.
I mean, exactly, have proved that anyhow, but you go up there and drive and see if there's a problem, if there are not, and someone could look if that's an issue with that. And, you know, these are all things that are in Portlandville's code, and I think she has just basically made recommendation that before the town can, should approve it, they should either give them relief from those conditions of their code or they should prove that it's not going to be a problem.
Yeah, that part about should provide relief for is, I think, the essential part. So we're on the same page.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll ask for all in favor of staff recommendations. Is everybody saying aye? Any close? Okay, Harry.
Have a wonderful holiday.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Have a nice holiday.
Thank you, you as well. Bye bye.
Thank you. We can go back to the board just to go over that quickly and make sure that we got that prepared.
Yeah, we just wanted clarification on the process for nominations. We weren't sure when we got, like, do we email and we wait for people to nominate themselves?
No, I think typically the nominee committee, when I use the honor, they would get together or talk to each other, email each other, and then they would ask people if they want that position, and then you come up with a slate. They recommend a slate to the board as a poll after you decide that you've cleared it. Some people aren't going to want to do what they did before, some, well, that kind of stuff, but I'm not moving forward anymore. Usually you run through the people. Excuse me?
You can't run this chair again?
I have no idea.
Yeah, we'll go, I'll send out an email with all ready. Yeah, you just became, yeah. Is it four years for sharing?
Whatever. All right, so you're going to make, you're going to, the committee is going to meet and then make a recommendation next meeting. Okay. And then we can take nominations from Florida at that point, too, we need to.
I think that's all that I got. Also, just a reminder, tomorrow night is the legislative session where we'll have the, hopefully, the full adoption of the countywide strategic document. So for anybody that's available, if you'd like to. Tomorrow at thirty six thirty, yeah? Yep.
Action Rebel took with regard to.
Would you ask?
Actually, the rebel will may have taken.
Did you not see the paper?
Actually, I don't buy the paper anymore.
They couldn't pass it because it was a three to two vote, it was not a super majority, so it failed.
So they needed, a super majority would have been what, five, nothing, or four?
Four.
But they couldn't even get a super majority in their own town.
Right. So basically, the resolution as we pass it stays.
Thank you.
There's a lot, people are getting grief on that, by the way, just so you know. The reason they're getting grief is that a lot of them did like the fact that the county planning board tied their hands. So I think that's what we're getting. So if you get any calls, you'll know what that was, and we baited against what they wanted to do.
I mean, if you know some law, you would think.
No, I think it's fine. It doesn't matter. People, I'm fine with it. We took action here based on what this board wanted to do. And that's what stands it. We can always agree with the staff's recommendation or what the town wanted.
And that's the recommendation.
Is what we did. And this board decided to go that way, and I'm fine with what this board decided to do, and I think people have to live with it. It was, I think it's a reasonable thing, that's why you have sent this out, right? And these are guidelines for what our job is. We did our job, decided to do that, and that's what was done.
It was self pressing, it was such a needed thing, you would think to do.
I just think that's what, yeah, you're getting that, so that's what happened. I did want to make one, are we going to work on it? Well.
Um, no, I think.
Well, Cory, in the meeting, I want to, one comment, and I had Kim talk to me, she was upset about the procedure last time, and she abstained. And she abstained. I'm sorry, to me, when somebody abstains, they usually have a personal. I've seen from voting, when I have a project that I've designed before this board or personal knowledge of a person, some person, for monetary thing, I don't know just because you live in the town, that's a reason to abstain to vote. If you're on the board, maybe you created the vote, but just because you live there, these guys couldn't vote on anything if that was the case. Paul and Dan would be going to have the stuff that came before Virgil. So I don't think that's personally, no, I don't, I'm not a lawyer, I don't, there's even rules on it. I think it's a personal thing with people that do it. You know, I abstain when I feel I have a conflict with that project. You might want to, but again, I don't know if it's required that she, I thought she was on board, too. I didn't know that. That's my, that's my personal opinion.
Would it have swayed if she voted or not?
No one made a difference. You know, it would have been, but I'm just saying that she wanted a chance to speak and didn't get a chance to speak, and she hasn't. And so I said, well, I think that she would have had to abstain. She could have voiced her opinion, you guys, she might have convinced people the other way by voicing her opinion, I don't know. All right? So that's my comment. So is there more business for us?
Motion to adjourn.
If there's no more business, then we can ask for a motion to adjourn, is that correct?
A second.